All right, President Sandy, we are good to go.
Great, thank you, Ms. Tregga. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to all parts of beautiful Grand Forks. This is Grand Fork City Council's Committee of the Whole for Monday, May 11th, 2020, under item one, call the order, 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigle?
Here.
Docler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Bean? We have a quorum.
Great. Under discussion items, 2.0, 2.1, loan request from Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mr. Sandy, I will, yes, I'll take that one. President Sandy, members of the committee. So the item that you have afforded you, request for a loan in the amount of $150,000. This request is coming from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Julie Riggs, as you can see, Executive Director of the CBB is also attending on this meeting and will give you more context to their operations as well as available after I summarize here for your questions. But first, as your staff report states, the CBB was established to market, promote, advertise, sponsor, and fund events for promotion of meetings, convention, trade shows, various different events for the Beneficial Leader Travel for the Grand Forks area and coordinate with the public-private volunteer agencies. The primary funding source for the Convention and Visitors Bureau is the lodging tax from hotel stays. As you know, the hotel industry has been greatly impacted by this COVID-19 pandemic. As your staff report summarizes March hotel activity, according to Ms. Riggs, dropped to about 34, dropped to 34.9%. Data not yet in for April, but projections through fourth quarter estimated at 50% of projected revenue. To help offset, the CBB has made budget adjustments. They've cut above $166,000. CBB does not qualify for the PPP program, but did receive, my understanding, $6,000 advanced through the SBA with the understanding that that would be forgiven. The CBB has applied for the PACE recovery program, working through the Bank of North Dakota with a local lender on that program and still waiting to hear on that. The loan requested in front of you tonight would come from our Fund 2163 Economic Development Fund to be paid back over a five-year period and to be paid back sooner if able. We do have Julie Riggs on the meeting virtually with us, and I'm going to turn it over to Julie, and she can maybe, first of all, just give you a few words regarding their plans in future and be available for questions.
Hello, Ms. Riggs.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. Thank you for considering this. This is the first time, I think I mentioned to Mr. Sandy, this is the first time in 18 years that I know of we've asked for any type of loan. And so it's a, it's a tough one, but the last few years, due to the low Canadian exchange rate, we have utilized more of our reserves so we could continue marketing the way we do. And then COVID hit. We were looking at 2020 being a very good year. February was the first month I've seen in a few years where average daily rate and occupancy were both up. And then came the middle of March, and everything really, really fell apart. So as Ms. Starstedt mentioned, March occupancy dropped to 34.9%, and that was with two good weeks. April is typically a very good month. With lodging tax collections, we have, we typically have a lot of sporting events, and one of our major ones, the Junior Grand Am Basketball Tournament, of course, was canceled. And we've seen a number of events canceled, April, May, and now, of course, into June. We are expecting, we don't have lodging tax collections for April yet, and we don't have occupancy information yet because we're two months behind on that. But we're expecting April and May lodging tax checks to be very low. I do expect some revenue coming in, as we do have a handful of hotels that are doing very well, housing government employees and essential workers, healthcare workers. We've been working with them to provide care packages for those people staying there. So you'll see, like I said, just a handful of properties that there are a number of cars in the parking lot, but it's not much. And so we're really looking at a whole new time for the Convention and Visitors Bureau and for, for this industry in Grand Forks, at least for the foreseeable future. So while I mentioned we have $166,000 in cuts, we are cutting daily, but things are changing daily. So it's, you know, our event services obviously are going to come down because some of the events aren't happening. But we also want to be ready and able to assist those events that are going to continue and whatever, whatever way they're going to continue. So not only are we looking at not hiring some positions that are empty, we're looking at reevaluating how the whole visitor center operates and, and making that more efficient. Of course, over the years, as technology improves, you see less people coming into the visitor center. And we've been leery about making changes to that because there's still people who use it. But we, this is the time, this is the time to make those changes. And so as our staff is now coming back into the office, there will not be one part of what we do that won't be evaluated in an effort to hopefully become more efficient. And, but number one, our services will always be our top priority and helping those groups get back to some kind of normal. So that's just kind of an overview, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Riggs. Can you, just for the benefit of the people listening at home, to make sure that they understand, can you explain your source of revenue?
Yes.
And in general, what you spend your revenues on?
Absolutely. So our annual budget is about, this year, we had a projection of about 1.1 million. And over 95% of that budget comes from hotel motel tax in both Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. And so we are very fortunate that we work with both cities, and you collect that tax, that 3% tax, and distribute it to the CBB. So we are, our, our types of organizations, our industry likes really long acronyms. So we are a destination marketing organization. So we do everything we can to promote the Greater Grand Forks area to all visitors. And a lot of times, we have local people saying, well, what tourists are coming here? What visitors are coming here? But we actually do very well with visitors. As you know, we have a number of facilities that, that provide entertainment and events to those visitors. But we host many conventions, athletic tournaments, and of course, a number of events and festivals, concerts, and those all attract people to our area. Of course, the University of North Dakota attracts many people to our area with visiting family and friends. And then we have our Canadians. And while the last few years have been more difficult because the exchange rate has been down, it's, it's still a major driver for us. And just last week, we were doing a giveaway. Of course, this has to, last week had to be National Travel and Tourism Week during COVID. And we did a Canadian giveaway, and I was kind of nervous about it because our Canadian friends don't mind telling us when they're not happy with us, too. And within 24 hours, we had over almost 2,000 engagements in the giveaway that we were doing. And it was all people excited to come back to Grand Forks, saying they missed being here. And it's, you know, it's not real research, but it, it's a good sign that people want to come back.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Riggs? From the committee? Yes, Mr. Weber?
Yes, the, the last major concert at the Alaris, I think, goes a long way to demonstrate the incredible value of the work you do, the value add that the city enjoys. Current projections indicate that we may not have yet seen the worst of this COVID crisis. I'm, I'm hoping that that doesn't come to pass, but we, we need to be prepared for that. Nonetheless, we are going to emerge from this. Things will not be the same. We're not going back to the old normal. There will be a new normal. But that new normal is, is going to require and going to benefit from new visitors to our community. And I'm glad to see that you're thinking strategically and long-term. And I, I would like to move approval of this request.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second?
Second, yes, Ms. Marshall, seconds, and yes, Ms. Marshall.
Yes, Ms. Riggs, the 150,000, you know, I, I realize there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of unknowns. Do you anticipate that that will get you through the end of your fiscal year satisfactorily or hard to tell?
It's, it is hard to tell, but that, right now, with the projections and with what we're looking at potentially doing, yes, that, that is absolutely the plan. If we were able to receive some other type of assistance, for example, the U.S. Travel Association, along with destination marketing organizations like us, are lobbying Congress to, in the fourth phase, to try to include 501(c)(6) organizations in the PPP. If we were able to receive some additional type of support in that way, we would hope we could pay it back sooner. What I'm thinking is, in some way, you're going to see a new CBB come from this because we're going to have to make some long-term plans because, as we know, COVID is not going away. And, you know, with something that we're going to continue to need to deal with. So I think, you know, we're, we're going to really reevaluate everything and how we can better serve visitors the most efficiently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Any other comments?
I'm just, just very quickly, I, I wasn't here for the first part, but I, I just wanted to say that I think the economic benefits of what CBB does for the community is huge, and it's a great big return on our investment to keep them healthy and continue doing what they do. So I really support this motion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bean. Any other comments? Seeing none, there's a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Riggs.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and please stay in touch with us if there are any other issues that come up.
I will. Thank you very much, all of you, for your support.
We got item 2.2, Developer Plans Update. Mr. Phelan?
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee of the whole. Council President Sandy, as you know, we've been working on restarting our economy and, and recovery plans, and that has included us reaching out to developers. And obviously, we, we've reached out to infill developers in our community. We've also reached out to, I'll call it more greenfield types of developments. As you recall, prior to, we'll say, early March, we were tracking a, a March, a joint meeting with our govern, local government partners to include the school district and county, in which we were going to discuss some development that we're doing in and around Grand Forks, mainly to our south and to our west. At that point in time, I think we got the green light from the city council to further do some due diligence regarding what it would take to further develop our community to the south and to the west. And of course, as we, you know, the previous agenda, this COVID has hit us and stopped a lot of things in its tracks sadly. But the good news is this, as we've reached out to both infill developers and with greenfield developers, people are still bullish on Grand Forks. They're bullish on the projects they were planning pre-COVID, coming out of COVID. Maybe they're a little bit different, so that's really good news for Grand Forks. And so what we thought we'd do this evening, just because of a few items down, Mr. Walker's going to talk about a interim sanitary sewer lift station study on our south end, and we should pick up the conversation where we left it in March, moving forward. So today, we're going to, we're going to talk about those three areas we discussed in that early first quarter into March, in and around, we'll call it the 62nd Avenue South area. We're going to follow up on the Interstate Interchange Project on I-29 and 47th Avenue South, giving an update on where we're at that, and that was going to open up through the development in that area. And then finally, we have an area that's south of Merrifield Road. And Merrifield Road on the south end of Grand Forks is the flood protection line of Grand Forks. And there's a proposed development that would be on the south side of Merrifield that would like to be served via our sanitary sewer system. And so we're going to, we're going to hit all five of those and get some feedback from you early on and just so you have situational awareness of where we're going. So really, tonight, we're just kind of giving an update, looking for further feedback, and we'll keep moving forward with positive growth and development. So with that, I'm going to rely upon Ryan Brooks is going to give us kind of the overview, and Mr. Grasser is going to provide some infrastructure development updates, and then we'll, we'd open it up for any Q and A that you may have, Mr. Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Brooks, good evening.
Thank you. I'll start sharing my screen, and hopefully, everybody can see that. So this is, this map is similar to what we showed you in January. The areas that we talked about at that time were, was this area that was on the wet side of the Dyke in the Shady Ridge area. This one was what we referred to as the Johnson Lowry area. Was, Lowry was the name of the consultant that they were working with there. In addition, Todd had mentioned as well, there's a more of a rural development that's being looked at down here. Here's Merrifield Road as it comes across. That's the southern edge of our flood protection system. So we're kind of dealing with both, two edges of our, of our flood protection system here, down here in the south and, and as well along the east with some of these new developments. In the blue are the areas that have been plotted, and we're seeing residential growth go on, whether it be through multifamily or through single family as well. The, the rural development that we spoke of, it's about 70-acre piece that's here, would be connected up to, to the north into our system. I'll let that be talked a little bit further by others. But the fourth area I wanted to talk about was on the west side of Washington. So this is an area that Curry is in control with, with Johnson Spruill folks, and they're interested in developing on this side, too. We don't have specific plans on that, but it's another area we thought we should be informing you of as well in terms of folks that are interested. With that, I'll kind of turn it over to Al and let him give you a little bit further definition on everything.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for that great lead-in. Yeah, basically, these are some of the areas that developers are, have continued, expressed interest in the past and are continuing. We're under the impression that they are all moving forward at some, some level, although I think the pace and speed has probably slowed down a little bit. The, the item, as, as Mr. Phelan mentioned earlier, the item that kind of triggered this is item 2.5 on tonight's agenda, which would be the design engineering and construction engineering for the proposed lift station, right where Mr. Brooks has the hand there. That would be a lift station, would essentially serve not just that colored yellow area there. It would, it would serve that entire section of land all the way from Belmont Road to Washington and 67, 62nd Avenue South down to Merrifield Road. That's typically how we, we like to set up our lift stations. It's efficient to, to basically serve one section of land. So again, that's before you tonight. Couple other quick updates, development related. I was just going to mention, a week ago here, we awarded a project on Belmont Road, and we are starting reconstruction on Belmont Road this summer. We're actually starting that on the south end. We're, we're, we're starting there, you know. I feel like we're a couple of years later than what I would have liked to have been. We'd like to get those roads in before development occurs so that when people build their homes and they, and they look at their budgets, they know that the roads are complete, they know what their special assessments are going to be, you know, and there aren't any surprises. So that's, that's been one of our goals in, in trying to bring those kinds of developments in concurrent with, with the rest of the subdivision. As you know, the budgeting in the past has been, prevented us from doing all of that, and we were hoping to get a head start on some of that here with some of the prey dog money. But anyway, so we're, we're going to start on, on Belmont Road, basically from 55th Avenue South down to 62nd. Then in the, in the long-term CIP, we actually have two more segments of road moving north. Again, till we basically tie up onto 47th Avenue South. And that would bring that entire section up to urban-type standards, curb and gutter, that type of thing. Finish off the sidewalks, finish off the berms. Again, make it look like the rest of town. The, I'll skip over a, a little bit, change subjects. Interchange on 47th Avenue South, if you recall. Oh, it was la, late last fall, we had a request from the DOT. They said, hey, are, are you still interested in cost sharing on the environmental impact statement for 47th Avenue South? And we said, yes, we would be. And remember, 47th Avenue is essentially a way of addressing the capacity and traffic issues that are going on on 32nd Avenue South. Obviously, today, there is very little traffic congestion on 32nd. But in some of the long-range transportation plans that the MPO has done, and some of the early studies have shown that eventually 47th is probably going to have to peel some of that traffic off. You can't continue to push the, the traffic onto that interchange and keep that working. So anyway, that, the EIS, we've been working with the state on the timing of that, and we've, we've worked out the timing on that, that they're going to start the consultant selection in 2021. So basically, this winter, and we're estimating our share on that is about $1.5 million. So those were just a couple of, maybe just jumping back onto the lift station, and I apologize for maybe jumping around a little bit. We, we don't show the line on here, but the forest main out of the, out of the city lift station would basically go straight north. Again, it would tie into a, an existing forest main that exists on 62nd Avenue South. And, you know, that's already in place. It's been part of the planning process. We got done constructing some of those a couple of years ago. So again, all these things kind of lead one into the other, so that, that's the next step. And with that, any questions that I can answer, Ryan or Mr. Phelan?
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Maybe we should try to divvy this up and take questions based upon the projects. So for example, do people have questions about the 47th Avenue South interchange that they'd like entertained? Yes, Mr. Weigle?
Just briefly, I know last time we talked, we talked about determining our project number one, two, three, four, and so on. We haven't talked about that recently. Or have we thought about, you know, what project we want as number one, what project we want as number two, and so on? So that when we do go to Bismarck or we do work with our federal partners, that we have an idea what our plans are.
Is that a rhetorical question, Danny, or is that for someone in particular?
Question for Todd.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Phelan?
And Sandy, I think that's, that's a very good question. We did get solicitations from our North Dakota DOT because there's a potential for an infrastructure package through the CARES Act, another phase, to try to get America working again. And obviously, construction is a bipartisan way to invest in our country. We still believe in infrastructure investment in our country, from both parties, I should say. We did submit, just because it's further along than in, any of the other, we did submit the, the, we'll call it grade separation at 42nd and Demers, as, because we're further along in the planning process, we could stay with a straight face that we could actually get something accomplished because it's Marshall already. I think we should bring all those back. The other two, we haven't really, maybe, I dare say it, another south-end development issue is really the south-end bridge. And we've kind of put that on ice a little bit, too, for the last few months, too, for obvious reasons. So I think it is a good idea for us to bring back all four of those projects. I would say the Urban Bridge, the Merril, Merrifield Bridge, and then the Grade Separation in the 47th Avenue South. We keep promoting the Grade Separation at 42nd and Demers just because it's a further so long. And if we, if we had an opportunity to do something quickly, it's the one project we can say, hey, we can move this project forward. And that's why we've been, we've been prioritizing that as number one, just because it's further along than any other project that we have. But we're trying to get all the rest caught up, too, in the meantime.
Perfect, thanks.
Phelan, Mr. Weigle, does that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Great. Any, any actual questions about 47th Avenue interchange?
Well, if I could add, I agree with Mr. Weigle. I think we should be trying to rate all of these and get as many of them as close as we could be for, to be shovel-ready because if there does get to be some federal stimulus packages, most of them will always be aligned with those that are ready to go. So I think with what Todd and Mr. Weigle said makes sense. And I think we probably should have more than one ready to go if we can, or at least working toward that so that you get all the preliminary done so we can hit it hard when the time comes. So, so I just want to make sure I support that and that we, you know, one of the great ways of getting our economy back is going to be through infrastructure and infrastructure projects. There's the, all of the, the support entities that help and deliver all the product, and then you've got the actual construction, and all of that has good economic impact for us. So just want to let you know, I think that makes good sense and support that.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any other thoughts about the 47th Avenue interchange? Yes, Ms. Mock?
When we were talking about the 47th interchange, I thought one of the big things we were talking about was the need to do that work so we could see where that interchange would go for the developers so that they could have that for planning purposes, so we didn't run into issues that, they didn't know where to plan for that. But I guess when it comes down to the need, particularly when we're seeing traffic levels as they are right now, I would have a very hard time voting to support spending the amount of money that that project comes with to relieve traffic on 32nd Avenue, which we're not having issues with. Now, I know we're always planning for the future, but we don't really know what the future is right now.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. Mr. Grasser?
Yeah, I think, I think that's part of what the, the environmental assessment is going to do. It's going to evaluate those alternatives again in a fresh light. You know, for 32nd Avenue, when we talk about locations, too, you know, this, the alignment of, of the 47th interchange may stay right on 47th. Or one of the other alternatives, I think we talked about was, you know, should, should we bring the actual interchange a quarter mile or so south and kind of, if you swing that, swing the roads to the south and back again, it would give a little more separation to the ramps that are already existing on 32nd. I know there's a concern at the federal and state level about the ramps might be too close. They, they interact with each other. So all of that, I think, is going to be part of that environmental assessment. The, as I understand it, the full-blown EIS will probably take about two years. So it's going to be a very complete study, and I think it'll give us a chance to take a look at some of those issues that you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Jeannie, Ms. Mock, did you want to follow up to that, or was that satisfactory?
Um, no, I mean, I guess I probably have some other questions on the development side, but if you want to stay on one topic.
Certainly. Well, does anyone else have any other thoughts about 47th Avenue interchange? Seeing none, Ms. Mock, would you, would you like to start on the development on the south end?
Um, do we have? I know I asked a question on fire stations and how developing further south would work with fire stations. I don't know if we've ever gotten an update on that. Also, I would be interested Also, I would be interested in a full cost for the city and how it's being proposed that all of these developments um including underground and trunk infrastructure and pump stations, all of that, how all of those elements would be paid for.
Thank you, Ms. Mark. Mr. Grasser, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think some of those things, those are good questions. Some of those are are things that we're going to be uh working up. Again, the lift station is one of the bigger ones um from the city's cost because we paid for that a hundred percent. So the lift station, force main, but yes, there will be other components of things that we're going to be carrying, uh potentially carrying costs on storm uh storm ponds and some of those kinds of things, some of the road infrastructure extensions. I don't want to speak for Chief Lorenz, but as I recall, the the last discussion that I I recall having with him was that uh the response times and things of the stations are not necessarily all directly related to um a distance marker per se. And uh my sense was that the south end triggers that we're talking about here, uh at least those areas uh north of Merrifield Road, I I definitely got the impression they weren't gonna trigger a a fire station yet, just because we have that other one down there at forty seventh, it's in pretty pretty close proximity uh at this point in time. But that's a a good follow up question. We can bring some of those items back.
I am unmuted if you can hear me.
Hello, Chief, good evening.
Good evening. Um Ryan Brooks and I met and we looked at some, did some measuring uh via GeoGore-Tex on some of that. And to get to that very north edge of that development, which likely is how the development would happen first, it's it's really not outside of what we would like to see for a response area. And then as the development grows south, that distance gets to be a little more. But I think before we would ever consider, you know, moving or adding another fire station, we would really have to do a very detailed look at that. Um where may maybe possibly moving a station before building another one would financially make the most sense. But I think as the development develops, that would be many years away because not only do you look at distance, but you have to look at the type of risk, how much risk and the demand for service that comes in that area. Um just because there's an area of the city, if it's primarily open fields, non-developed area doesn't need mean we need fire protection in that area. I think we would have to look at the the how quickly the area develops and the type of risks and the calls for service that happen out in that area. Um I'm not sure one or two calls for service per year warrants the need to add a whole another fire station down in that area. As those three things start to build collectively, meaning the distance, the type of risk, the number of risks, and then the demand for service, then we start to look at needing that fire station to accommodate the growth. But as for right now, I'm comfortable with our current fire station locations and the services we could provide into that area. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Mark, follow up?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, from a city planning perspective, if we are saying we are ready to develop an entire section on the south end of town, I realize that's going to take years to develop, but we had to plan for this last fire station for years to be able to handle the cost of the fire station, the cost of all the staff. Um, that's a significant investment for the city to add firefighters for a fire station. And I understand we might be able to do some shuffling. But I guess I don't think it's appropriate planning to say we're gonna develop a section of land, but it'll take years to happen, so we don't need to plan for that.
I think if you'd like, we could certainly lay out a map and look at some alternatives to what that looks like immediately and what it could look like as that area develops. And then what might be the best course of action, whether it's adding or relocating?
I think that would be a better way to get a full picture of the full cost that we may be seeing from that development.
Sure.
We'll say that um when the previous fire chief came to us for that new fire station years ago, the concept was it was designed so that it could serve a much larger area than just down to, you know, just south of forty seventh or fifty fifth. And it was planned with future development in mind. So I agree with you, Ms. Mark. We certainly should be evaluating costs and and needs in the future. Um but I would, I believe that it at a minimum, it was designed to go as far as Merrifield Road and a little bit beyond, so.
Um, and this is a question I have for Ryan. Ryan, when we looked at that that day, do you remember what those distances to that north edge were? I I don't. From stations three or five?
Yeah, it was under one and a quarter miles.
Okay, when you look at fire protection, there's and and national standards, there's kind of two that jump out. One is I S O, um insurance service organization, and the other is N F P A. Um and generally, when looking at I S O, they they use a polygon of a mile and a half circumference from a fire station. And the reason that is depicted as a mile and a half is because it correlates to a four minute travel time, which is the N F P A standard and the ultimate goal. And so trying to design based on those two parameters is is what we use in addition to the types of risk and the demand for service. Because it all really plays into it. You can have a fire station within a mile and a half, but it might be surrounded by a golf course and parks. And so that changes where you may locate it and put it beyond what a typical station, the mile and a half spread would look like. So I I think we'll look at all of those things combined when we evaluate that whole area.
Thank you again, Chief. Any other follow up for Chief Lorenz? Related to the fire station, okay. Any other comments related to the south end development? I uh I I had a couple of quick questions. Um, Mr. Grasser, um the the development to the south of Merrifield Road, um you said that they are interested in um connecting into our sewer system. Not was it storm sewer as well as? No, just.
The uh uh rural water system, uh you know, is is in the business of delivering rural water. They've also been exploring a business model wherein they uh can provide uh some sanitary sewer services in some of these rural subdivisions, I think, existing and and obviously proposed. Uh in the Red River Valley, the uh septic tank grain field system uh oftentimes does not work very well because of the high groundwater and things. And so they uh are exploring an a business model of of being able to provide that service to get that sewage out of there. And then I think they're envisioning there would be an agreement with the city of Grand Forks wherein we would uh allow a tie in and do treatment. That's just, I think, the general concept, but there there would be, uh I haven't heard any discussions from from there and yet uh relative to storm sewer.
So so the the so as of today, they're only interested in sewage?
Well, they would, in that in that particular subdivision, they would uh provide the water supply also.
So they want, so that, okay, so they want water and sewage and not storm sewer?
Correct.
Okay, that was gonna lead to my question is, isn't that area covered by rural water currently?
That's who I'm talking about. Rural water would would be the ones to supply the water, and they also want to get into uh doing some uh domestic sewage service.
Hey, Mr. Grasser, I'm trying to figure out what they want to do with the city of Grand Forks.
They want us to.
What am I, what am I missing here?
Uh, right now, the dividing line for, we'll call it drinking water, is Merrifield Road. So anything south of Merrifield Road is in the rural water district. What they're asking for us is in in lieu of, they want to create a kind of urban type subdivision. But in the country, we'll say on the other dividing line. But in order to do it, make smaller lots, they want to see if they can connect to our sewer system. We'll say writ small from what we do with East Grand Forks. It would have to entail an agreement between us and the developer and probably East Central Rural Water of how we would serve them. You know, what the wholesale cost was. So probably a bit like we did with East Grand Forks, they're asking for us to interconnect our sewer systems. And I think county planning and zoning is encouraging where possible because they've had some problems to try to hook up to a municipal wastewater system, just because it's just environmentally more friendly. So that's what they've asked. If, hey, we can move, connect to the city, then we can, we can have smaller lots and have a more urban type development just on the fringe of the city of Grand Forks.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Feeling. So they want to connect to our sewage system. But get rural water in that area. Are we gonna look to provide rural water for that area? Or are we gonna look to provide water, non-rural water? Are we gonna look to to connect our water to that area?
No, I think we would go to, right now, our plan is, our map is to our flood protection limits. So I think for right now, they would, they would probably want to design the subdev- development, and this has to go with the planning and zoning too. I just so you know, in this, to allow this to happen, it has to go to planning and zoning, as I recall, and I'd call in Mr. Brooks. Um it's in our E T zone, and so we would have to probably look at our zoning requirements, planning and zoning requirements in this area to allow a subdivision of this sort. Um so there's, there's lots of moving beyond us to serving it. There's a lots of planning and zoning issues too with this, so.
And how would that sewage be fed to? Would do, would we need another, we're talking about a lift station already that covers the that square. This is beyond that square. Do we need another lift station to serve that area? Or is it gravity fed?
I I think what they looked at, if you go down to their um small square, they would build a pump station at their own cost. And then they would have the additional cost of interconnecting it to our force main system. Similar to what East Grand Forks did, they had to build pump stations and and then they had a interconnect to one of our to our system, basically, in our side of the river. They'd have to work on that too, and it'd require an agreement with us and figuring out how the capital be would be paid for, and then what the operation and maintenance costs would be for them.
Thank you, Mr. Feeling. Does anyone else have any?
Mr. Sandy, I I I have a couple of comments to make if we're talking about these four areas in general um and development. And I think when this came up, I think uh Mr. Feeling talked about it being in March. I I wasn't at that meeting and so didn't respond. I'm not for sure if you were either at that one, in fact. Um, Sir Sandy, but two, a couple of things come to light with this. Number one, I'm I'm not necessarily in favor of adding new subdivisions outside the line of protection from the flood protection system. So what what happens is as the city grows, um and we have and and there may come a time when that's going to happen, I guess we'll have to deal with that. But I would also like to figure out how we might expand the flood protection system because as we even experienced this year, and luckily the waters weren't very as high as projected, any of those areas that are outside the line of of protection in the city limits, it creates a dilemma for us. Are we going to protect them? And because they they will be within the city limits, and we certainly don't want anybody to flood, specifically those within the city limits. So I I don't have an exact answer on those, but I think that's something we need to think and talk about. How can we at least protect them? Now, I know they're going to be above the hundred year floodplain, I believe, and and meet the requirements that's necessary. But that doesn't give them free board and and you're still gonna have to maintain the infrastructure in those areas, even if they flood. So I I just like to understand more uh about what those true impacts would be for us. Um, and and uh so that would be the first thing I'd like to to understand. The the second one, I guess I would maybe ask Al or Todd or whatever. On on the one that's south of of Merrifield Road, it it seems like that's leapfrog development for me, where you're gonna go all the way south, a mile further south than we currently exist. And even though we're not gonna be paying for the infrastructure, um or I'm not, and I'm not for sure who who is paying for that force main. It has a feeling like we're promoting people to move outside the city limits um and and still have the access to city infrastructure. Todd, could you maybe talk a little bit about that? If we did, would we know, add some type of annexation agreements and something like that for at least down the road and and then the cost uh of of serving them with that infrastructure?
Uh Council President Sandy, Count Vice President Bean, um I agree that they're trying to take advantage of locating just outside the city, so you can have, you know, you can have the best of both worlds, right, be near the city, but just outside um the city. I think on the waste way, if we did serve them with wastewater, there's probably some environmental benefits to it. And certainly, we would cover our costs. Plus, I would hope, um if we were to serve them in in that particular area. But I think it's gonna require planning and zoning. Um, do we want to allow this to occur in our in our extraterritorial zone? And so that's gonna be a a parallel conversation above and beyond us to serving them from a planning and zoning perspective. To your point, does this make sense for us to create subdivisions? Um, just outside the city in in this form or fashion. I think that's gonna be a another conversation regarding planning and zoning that uh that we'll have to have.
Yeah, I I I appreciate that. I think I just want to make sure that everything is on the table and and we're aware of it and what those implications would be. Because even as we cross sixty second, I mean, we have, it's interesting, we have two things on the table here. One of them is crossing the sixty second, which has always been a bit of a boundary for us. And then we're also looking at at going a mile further south and crossing Merrifield. And uh and a- again, understanding truly what those implications are going to be for us. I I appreciate the map that shows the blue areas, and I guess I'm hoping, and I think it's great for the city as we continue to grow, but we grow smartly, and we don't necessarily have to expand at at the right time, whatever that right time might be. Uh if we did do a forty seventh Avenue South interchange as an example, and we put in that road systems out there, when are we gonna look at any type of development, especially residential development in that area also? And do all of these compete? Is there, I guess I should know, being on the M P O, is there a a growth mechanism that the city wants to see us take place that's cost effective? Uh, you know, we've looked a lot at infill, that's critically important. There but eventually that would fail anyway, and there is gonna be the need to grow. Uh and we just want to grow smart, and that's that's really what I wanted to make sure we we think about and talk about as these things come forward.
If I can say um make a comment um from a a long term perspective, a guy that's been around the city for a long, long time, uh we are breaking kind of new boundaries with with some of these concepts. It 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 reminds me a lot of the challenges the the city had back in the the late nineties, uh mid to late nineties when uh we couldn't cross thirty second Avenue South. Thirty second was actually our boundary uh at that time because we didn't have sanitary sewer facilities. We didn't have, uh we didn't know how to, we didn't have an in place plan to to deal with the storm sewer. And what came about was a a large investment over time. We we uh we constructed the south end drainway, which really became integral to be able, being able to handle the the s- the storm sewer there. Uh there were also then a a a series of of lift stations. And we did uh get a bit lucky with uh receiving some C D B G money after the flood that allowed us to put a couple of lift stations out there. But we have since been doing, I won't call infill isn't the right word, but we've been filling those areas in. But the really big trunk backbone things were already in place for us, and we've been running off of those for the last twenty years uh to 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 the the benefit of the community. Uh sixty second, crossing sixty second is a very similar, and and these are all great questions, and they're all questions that we need to to run down and try to quantify. But uh again, it reminds me very, very much of what we were faced with back in the nineties when literally we couldn't ca- cross thirty second Avenue South. So that's just a long term perspective from an old guy.
So Al, just very quickly, and I did, you bring up one I didn't think about, we we would probably have to at some point have another south and drain system. Uh surface range like we have now. Surface range like we have now, and, and that'll continue to happen as we continue to go south for the next hundred years. Some way that water's got to get over to the river, is that right?
And we act, we actually have CPSs under contract. We put them, oh, that agreement went through a couple of months back to do another reconnaissance level, look at the, at how to deal with the drainage between 62nd and Merrifield Road, and then all the way west to the interstate. The very first perimeter drainage study that we did, boy, that's been fifteen years ago too already, I believe. We just did a very cursory look in that area because the development seemed so far away. So now we, we need to do that next layer of investigation on our perimeter drainage study to start refining. And I, and I think what we're going to find is we're going to need to have another outlet to the river, which, which kind of rolls back to maybe what your thoughts and comments are, Mr. Vian, is, is, that's, that's currently underway at this point in time. Those are always our biggest challenges is the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer.
Although, although Al, you do have whatever, what number drain, number four, or whatever it is, the Merrifield Road one, we should be able to try to utilize that now, you know, to our advantage, which we, we didn't have available for us when we developed further north.
And, and that's one of the things we're going to look at with the drainage study is can we bring any water? We do know after, after seeing the, the, I got some interesting pictures of that area this spring and last fall. That, that ditch fills all the way up, basically. And so there's a question about how much water can we push, push back through that, that legal drain right now? It's being pretty heavily used. But that's one of the questions that we, we have to work our way through.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser, Mr. Weber.
I recall when the developer came into council chambers to, to talk about this proposal on 62nd. And I believe I said something along the lines that I was predisposed to not like this. And then I found myself really liking what they were proposing. It was, it was a fantastic, smart design. I was not thrilled that it had to be out there. And I'm always promoting infill development. I'm concerned about suburban sprawl, and especially the cost of suburban sprawl. At the same time, I recognize that it's inevitable that we're going to continue growing as a city, and we need to do so in a thoughtful, planful manner. Let me ask this, there, there isn't a staff report with, with this. Precisely what are we being asked to respond to tonight? Are you looking for a, a general kind of green light thumbs up, red light thumbs down? Because based on what it is you're asking for, I'm inclined to say, I, I'm ready for P and Z to, to take a close look at this and give us, give us their feedback. What, what is it you'd like from us tonight?
I think Council President Sandy and Council Member Weber, what we want to do is give you an update, number one. Just because on, you know, in a few items down, you're going to have something in front of you. Also wanted to give you a highlight that we did do a storm, we're in the midst of a stormwater study in this very same area. And then we've had this new development that's actually outside of our city limits or our city line that we wanted you to make, made, made aware of. Just that a lot of things are moving forward. And, and finally, to give you an update that we've been following up with developers across the city to include greenfield developers, and, and they're still in, interested in investing in our city. And just because we've been, we've been kind of in COVID mode for the last 10 weeks. So just to let you know all those things. And to let you know that we're going to be following up with some further details. Just to make sure that we're going down to the right, still the right path, as, as I think where we left you guys probably 10 weeks ago.
Yeah, it's great news, isn't it, that even with all that's going on, we continue to have developers interested in betting on our city and, and our future. This is really fantastic news. And we might have some disagreements about urban sprawl versus infill, but this is important. What the, the development out south of Merrifield, we can't stop that. So we're just being asked if we would do a cost neutral extension of our sanitary sewer to a, a potential customer, the way we did with East Grand Forks. Is that a, a fair way of thinking of it?
I think it's twofold. Number one, do we have any interest in serving them from a wastewater perspective, utility perspective? I think number two to highlight, I think Mr. Brooks is going to say something. I think the city council will have to weigh in because it's in our, inside of our extraterritorial zone. So you'll have a planning and zoning now. And I wanted to give you, I wanted to let you know sooner rather than later that there's kind of a twofold issue, and I defer to Mr. Brooks on the planning and zoning side.
Thanks, Todd. I think Todd hit it up pretty good, that there is a, there is going to be a question about planning and zoning. It is in our ET area. A lot of those, we, we've been looking at one per 40 acre densities, so one housing unit per 40 acres out in our ET area for the most part. And, you know, some of those things are really built on too. We have very rich farmland around the city of Grand Forks, and we do not want to eat that up quickly. So a lot of that's based on that as well. So this is going to be a little bit bigger density development, and it's going to be, it, it would need our assistance to have that go forward. So with that, it would be the planning and zoning. And we don't have a timeline with that specifically, but that, that would be the, the process that would move forward.
That's really useful clarification. Thanks. I'd forgotten about the ET aspect of this.
Yes, Ms. Ma.
So with, Todd, you mentioned an item a few down, and I'm assuming that that's the interim lift station and the task order agreement? Is that what you're talking about? Okay. But part of my concern is, have we ever heard of a full cost of city investment to make this happen? Because I don't think I know how much the full cost for this development would be to the city. So I guess I don't know that I'm comfortable spending $160,000 on an agreement to move forward with the lift station when we don't have a full picture or a full perspective on whether we're actually supportive of making this leap right now past 62nd.
Council President Sandy and Council Member Ma. I think at our previous meeting, we did have some, I'll call it higher altitude estimates in this area, you know, regarding all the different underground utilities, water, wastewater, stormwater. And then including some initial transportation infrastructure costs in these areas. And then I think Al even broke it down into, you know, what our cost share would be versus special assess, and that's what they.
Can you remind us of what those are?
We probably, we probably, whatever you do tonight on item point five, we should probably give you a further update at the city council meeting. Kind of reminding you of where we're at on that. We did follow up, obviously, one of the big questions came, how are we going to serve this from a fire perspective? And, and thankfully Gary answered some of those questions this evening. But we will, we'll take a look at that presentation that we did. You know, several weeks ago, look and see if it needs updating. And then prior to item point five, whatever the city council does with that, we'll give you a, a quick overview of what we presented several weeks ago on that. And it's all coming back to me now. I recall that Council President Sandy and Council President, Vice President Bean were out of town. Both of you for that committee, the whole meeting where we presented this and Council Member Weber, you, you chaired the meeting. That was back in those days when you could actually travel. And so we should, we'll, whatever you do tonight, we'll reengage you as part of the city council meeting next, so that you would have a, a better perspective in what we could do at this moment of truth right now.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I'll, is there anyone else interested in, have any questions? I, I, I would like to follow up on something Mr. Vian sent, said earlier related to the development south of Merrifield Road. My initial reaction to it is I don't like it. And it's because, you know, as Mr. Vian pointed out, we should have some sort of annexation agreement in place for, for that for some point in the future. But without knowing where our next level of flood protection is going to go, how much it's going to cost, how we're going to allocate the expenses for it, and so on. I don't think we can, I don't think we would want to tie our own hands to an annexation agreement, knowing that we don't know if we're going to be able to provide flood protection for that development at any point in the future. And so, or at least in my lifetime. So although I'm not again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying no, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just, I'm not real excited about it, to be, to be very blunt about it. The concept of, of trying to figure out the flood protection for an extended area down there is, is, is a major undertaking for us. And just doing the studies and, and the engineering studies is going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city. Let alone how much it would actually cost to put that in. So that's just my general opinion on that. Otherwise, I'm sorry, Mr. Vian, did you want to say?
No, I would say I agree with you. I think what you said is makes perfectly good sense. I think it, it really brings to light another bigger question. How much development, not only within the city, but without, outside of the city? Should either the city or the county plan on doing without a plan for flood protection for those? I think, I think it actually brings to light a whole nother issue that, that needs just some discussion, is, is all I would say. But I would agree with you. I mean, if, 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 we should be careful about what we annex, but I think we should be careful about what we allow to develop also.
Perhaps that is, Mr. Grasser, perhaps that's a topic for the MPO to start considering. But with regard to development south of 62nd, we can, Mr. Weber, as you pointed out, we can talk about urban sprawl all day long. I think we, in, in the same vein, should talk about housing in general in our community and the cost of housing in our community, and people being concerned with the cost of housing in our community. And we've, I've spewed it over and over again that we have a shortage of housing at every single price point. And until we start getting more housing at various price points, we will continue to have housing issues and cost of housing issues. And so anytime, in my opinion, anytime a developer or a landowner wants to bring a piece of property into the city limits of Grand Forks where we can annex them, and so that they can build more housing, I think it's good. Yes, I, I've become a fan of infill development and think we should continue to encourage that. And I think we should strategically encourage that by using rent zones and TIFs and anything else we can do to encourage that. Similarly, I think we should also encourage development anywhere we can around the city that's currently inside of our flood protection. Yes, Ms. Marshall.
Okay, sorry. I wanted to, and, and this is kind of an unrelated area, but we touched on it in the discussion about the 47th Avenue interchange. And I'm just wanting to interject a quick question here about the status of the hydraulic study relative to the urban bridge areas that we've been looking at.
Mr. Grasser?
Yes, we had good questions. We're planning on bringing that back. It's still going to be a bit of a work in progress. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the hydraulics engineers. And they took a, took a shot at, they picked one, one crossing to, to start the analysis, to see where it went. See what some of the challenges might be before they, they took on the other two crossings that we have in the, in the budget and the study. So they've, they've, they've done a first, a first blush on one crossing, but they've got to work on the other two. And what they're doing is, again, they're looking at the hydraulic impacts of basically a high, medium, and low bridge. To, to see what the challenges then might be to offset the hydraulic impacts. Every time you put a pier, a pier in the river, you know, a, a support for the bridge or the bridge deck, all of those things basically interfere with the flow of the river. And so you need to find a combination of, there's trade-offs between the spacings of the pier and the size of the pier and the depth of the deck. All of those things are moving parts. You're trying to optimize that so you're having least, the least impact to the water. Because we will have to mitigate any hydraulic impacts at any of the locations. So that will be a complicated discussion when it comes back, but it, it will come back, but it's going to be weeks, if not a couple of months, probably till that comes back.
I was wondering about the timeframe. So that will probably potentially be even later on this summer before there would be some solid information for the, the council to look at and for the community to, to pay attention to as well.
Yeah, I, I generalize it as maybe midsummer in that timeline.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall, Mr. Grasser. Any other comments or questions about the exciting new developments in our community? Yes, Ms. Ma.
Wasn't, was one of the areas they were proposing to develop, was that outside of the flood protection? And I forgot what we were going to do for that section, or if that was ever decided?
That was, that was the discussion related to the storm, not the storm sewer, the, the sewage. They wanted to tie in similar to the way East Grand Forks tied in. They would put in their own force main and tie into our system.
I thought there was another section that was outside of the flood protection, not the one south of Merrifield. I thought the other one was also outside of the flood protection.
Yeah, to the east of Belmont and north of 62nd.
The Shady Ridge area there. Again, we haven't heard anything back recently from that developer yet. Though I haven't heard that they're discontinuing their interest. That area there, we do have a lift station already in place. I think, again, the, the very relevant conversations would, would be, you know, how much flood protection do we, we place in that area? Because we do know that there are floods that are going to be big enough that we need to consider that. We look like we were going there this, this spring. And we will bring you back a, a, a study that we also did on our three-foot flood raise and some additional options to flood fight Shady Ridge as it exists today. All those things will kind of roll together.
How much, did we, do we know how much we spent this spring on Shady Ridge? Or did we not have to mobilize those efforts?
The, I don't have the, the numbers for those. Essentially, the efforts we did with Shady Ridge are more associated with state, the safety, the fire department particularly, you know, they have, had a, a fire pumper truck and stuff on, on the other, on the wet side of, of East Lake over there. I know the, the police were doing extra patrolling and, and fire was, you know, had a boat and stuff. So it from a, a construction and, and an actual flood fighting stage, we did very little. We prepped it to put in a, a plug in the storm sewer so we could pump that area down and, and keep the water out to at least a flood gauge of 52. But I'd defer to anybody else, the, the dollars we spent, I think were essentially minimal.
I agree. Council President Sandy and Council Member Ma, very minimal.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan, Mr. Grasser, Ms. Marshall. Another question?
Yeah, for Mr. Grasser, with the efforts that we already are confronting with the Shady Ridge area that is, is currently developed. If the new development were to go forward, that would essentially expand the footprint in the area in that Shady Ridge area that would need the same kind of protection. Or we would need to, to deal with what that protection would, level would be. Would you see that adding a lot of additional complications to that issue? Or since we're already, you know, preparing in, you know, for some flood protection, but also preparing the residents that, that's kind of the deal with living in that area. They know when they develop there, and they know when they buy there, that, that they're outside the flood protection area. Would a new development or expanding in that area significantly change what we're already dealing with?
I could give you the half hour dissertation, but I, I, I won't. I'll take pity on everybody. I think the Cliff Notes version, in my mind anyway, is, is if we, if we develop on that, the undeveloped part of Shady Ridge, I think we burn that area. I, I'm not sure to the flood gauge. I'm thinking we must, you know, burn it to somewhere in the mid to, to upper 50s so that we actually have a line of protection for that. And, and because I think we're learning that we can't just simply walk away. That was the original philosophy, I think, with Shady Ridge. And yet, once you get that number of people out there, you, you really can't. And the downfall in hindsight is we didn't prep it then to be able to fight a flood, which is going to make it much more difficult. The new area here, I think we're going to have the ability to prep it. And, and that'll make it a lot easier to, to deal with in the future. I can do a lot more later on with drawings or anything. I can do a lot more later on with drawings or anything, but that's my general concept is is burming it up. So we have a we have a place to fight the flood.
Mr. Grasser, I'm sorry to to ask this question. But would 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 you see that burming as part of the developer cost, the city's cost, or a split?
Well, I guess technically that's a policy item. I I see it as a development cost, but but that would be a uh policy item for the city of Grand Forks. Right now, they they are uh outside. They're not being special assessed any of the flood protection uh costs uh at this point in time.
Okay, that that speaks volumes. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
I'll quit then.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, uh Mr. Grasser and Mr. Feeling. Very good presentation tonight. I really appreciate it. Move on to item two point three, cost partition participation maintenance agreement for project eighty two oh three. Ramp flush camera at Gateway Drive and I twenty nine. Uh Mr. Cranko, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. Uh the cost participation, construction, and maintenance agreement for you, it's a standard agreement with the DOT when uh project involves federal funds. The proposed project is to install a new video camera at the off ramp of I twenty nine and Gateway Drive as well as communication infrastructure in order to trigger a ramp flush on the I twenty nine off ramp. If traffic begins to back up onto the ramp, this is a fairly inexpensive safety project to uh try to minimize the backing up on the ramps. The DOT is actually proposing a very similar ramp flush with the thirty second Avenue project, which is scheduled for construction next year at the left turn lane realignment project. Um the project has already been bid out by the DOT. The low bid was uh from Strata in the amount of about thirty three thousand, just under that. Um and as this project is on the interstate ramp in a US highway, the cost share to the city is zero percent, so no cost to the city upfront. And the reason why the CPMA is uh required is because the maintenance is being uh would be taken care of by the city in the future as it is connected into our traffic signal system. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the cost participation, construction, and maintenance agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Cranko?
Move approval.
Second by Marshall. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item two point four, award bid for project eighty sixteen dash twenty twenty fog seal and project eighty one twenty five dash twenty twenty scrub seal. Mr. Cranko.
Uh as you may remember from previous discussions, uh we've mentioned a new pavement preservation technique called scrub seal. Uh this is a technique in which a uh a rejuvenated oil is placed onto the uh existing asphalt roadway. And it's moved with a broom to in order in order to push it into the cracks itself, followed by a series of chips over the top of it. Uh this project includes that as well as a traditional fog seal. The uh the fog seal is proposed to be used over streets that have been recently overlaid. And the scrub seal is proposed to be over placed on streets that haven't been uh paved recently. There is a map on in the back of the staff report that kind of color codes the two showing a large number of areas around the city that we would be using this technique. Um overall, we ended up receiving two bids on uh May fourth. And the low bid was from Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, amount of two hundred and seventy one thousand six hundred fourteen dollars and fifty five cents, which was actually thirty four percent below the engineer's estimate of about four hundred and thirteen thousand. Uh with the good bid prices that we received, staff is recommending awarding both the fog and the scrub seal project to Asphalt Surface Technologies Corp.
Any questions? By the committee, Mr. Weber?
Yeah, um one of the things we've learned over the last several years is that uh our our failure to keep up with some maintenance is is carried a heavy, heavy price. Maintaining our roads is expensive upfront, but it saves you in the long term. However, those costs, the the benefit of prevention is is a difficult thing to uh measure uh with much precision. Can you give aside some idea of what these seal coats can save us in terms of need for uh more extensive reconstruction in the future? What's what's the extension of life on on the roadway, for instance?
Uh unfortunately, there's no solid uh data to say a fog seal is going to buy you an extra year, two, three. Um however, it would likely extend the life of the pavement. The scrub seal itself, this is an experimental technique. Uh but the using of the rejuvenative oils help uh provide the flexibility to the oil itself that's in the asphalt um in order to maintain the flexible properties of the pavement itself. Um so unfortunately, I can't give you a solid date as to how many years this would extend the life of pavement. Um only that this is preventative maintenance to hopefully extend that life.
Mr. Grasser, would you like to add something?
Uh just a a sense of proportion uh to Councilman Weber's uh question. The uh and I'm really broad here, but the cost reconstructing kind of a a local interior street is going to be running around three million dollars a mile. Uh cost to do a mill and overlay is about half million dollars a mile. These scrub seals, I think, are probably what sixty eighty thousand a mile? I guess I'm not sure. These these are pretty good bids. And so if they can extend our pavement life for three to five years, uh it's what we're especially trying to do is keep that road so we can go back and do a mill and overlay at a half million dollar a mile and not let it deteriorate into the reconstruction range at three million. Uh those are very broad, but generally proportionate uh comments.
David, you know I respect your work, but Al just gave a much better answer.
He's got a lot more experience than me.
I'll I'll move approval. And uh thank you, Mr. Weber. Moved by Weber, Ms. Ms. Ma, did you? I know you had it. Will you second and then question, or did you?
I will second, and Brett asked my question, so I'm good.
Excellent. Very good. I uh I don't see any other comments or questions. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post in sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item two point five. Design Engineering Services Agreement for City Project eighty two seventeen, new interim sanitary lift station number forty eight and force main. Mr. Walker. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. Um we've talked a bit about uh this agreement in the previous agenda, item two point two. Um this is a a contract for design engineering services, bidding engineering services and construction engineering services associated with a new interim uh sanitary sewer lift station and associated force main. This is the force main or the, excuse me, this is um the the lift station that would serve uh one square mile within the city's flood protection area is generally south of sixty second Avenue and east of Washington. Um as was indicated uh earlier, uh this was uh instigated by one of the property owners in that area that wished to begin developing in this area. The reason that we're proposing to move ahead with the lift station at this time is is that the lift station is one of the most uh time consuming pieces of infrastructure. And that it needs, it's one of the first that that is needed. Uh the agreement before you is based on uh not an hourly, not to receive contract amount. Funding for this agreement would would come from the wastewater fund fifty two hundred. Um however, uh the budget, uh this year's budget uh did not include this project as it was not contemplated at the time the budget was prepared, which is the reason why we would need a budget amendment. Um if the project is advanced to construction, the the likely intent would be that we would sell a bond with repayments from the the wastewater fund. Um we're proposing constructing a uh lower cost interim station at this time, which would adequately serve this area for many years. We anticipate that an interim station would serve approximately forty to fifty percent of the one square mile area uh before a permanent station uh would need to be built. Um the permanent station would have a larger wet well, would have a more permanent control building, larger pumps, and an emergency generator. There are, excuse me, features uh that would be associated with this project that would be utilized in the future when we build a permanent lift uh lift station, such as the force main. Uh the wet well that we construct under this project could be used as an emergency pumping manhole, the telemetry, et cetera. Um very preliminary uh cost estimate, we we estimate that the interim station would cost approximately one point six million dollars. And the permanent station would be about three point eight million dollars. The intent would be is is that we would proceed with the design of this station at this point in time and not proceed with uh bidding out the project for construction until after the area has been uh brought into to P and Z and and has been platted. So uh with that, we would recommend the approval of the task order agreement with WFW for design, bidding, and construction administrative engineering services in the amount of one hundred sixty seven thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Walker, can I just ask a brief question before I open it up? Is there a difference in the engineering services agreement, what they would have to do if we were doing the permanent lift station versus the interim lift station?
If we were to design the permanent lift station, it would be more more uh detailed associated with it, so it would be likely a more expensive uh engineering fee for it.
Okay, thank you. There any any comments or questions for Mr. Walker, Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, um I, you know, uh harkening back to our previous discussion, uh I'd like to move that we approve this and move it forward to the full city council meeting next week, uh at which point we'll be getting a a review again of the information that was provided uh a while ago uh to a previous council meeting uh relative to total costs of constructing in in that area. I I think there's some real uh exciting aspects of of that potential project. Uh and there are lots uh of things that we uh need to discuss and need to uh have a better understanding of, but I'd like to see us move it along to the city council meeting.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Marshall, second by Weber. Are there comments? Um I I I have one question. Is there a Mr. Walker, is there a lifespan? What's the lifespan on an interim lift station versus a permanent lift station?
So an interim lift station, it would would basically consist of a of a wet well that has the pumps right inside of the the wet well and then a small uh probably a wooden uh structure uh that would house the uh the controls and that type of thing. Generally, um if it once the uh area develops and you start getting so much sewage that runs into the station, it becomes a problem to maintain uh as far as the 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 time that the lift station fills up. And maintaining a uh a wet well that's open to the uh uh to the outside for 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 tape for uh maintenance purposes. So it isn't necessarily a timeline. It's more of a lot of a of an issue of how much sewage is going to actually run into this station before you need to build the the permanent one. Beyond that, if this station stayed in place for probably fifteen or twenty years, at that point in time, you'd probably need to go in and do some rehabilitation of the station. Probably replace pumps that might be worn out by that time, uh do repainting, things like that.
What's the lifespan that we generally get out of a permanent lift station?
So the lifespan is is quite long, although about every fifteen or twenty years, we have to go back and rehabilitate those. Periodically, you will see uh lift station rehabilitation projects uh come before city council for approval. What happens?
Couple hundred thousand dollars.
Uh it sometimes it's it's more. Yeah.
I'm I'm not. I'm I'm trying to get my numbers to add up um on the cost of the interim versus a permanent. And I I recognize the permanent is little over two times the cost of the interim. But we're essentially proposing in today's dollars, having to spend five point four million dollars versus spending three point eight million ish, knowing that we may have to throw a half million dollars into it in fifteen, twenty years for for renovation. No matter what, that still comes in as a less costly. I recognize that the city of Grand Forks picks up the cost on the lift stations, correct, Mr. Grasser?
Yes, and I was just uh maybe this is a question for Mark also, but the uh we did an analysis of this a while back when we uh uh we're looking at some of our economic expansion areas. And there are there are a number of features on the essentially the the interim lift station. If we built a permanent lift station, we still have to have a large collection manhole and things outside of that station. That would that would go along with the 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 permanent. What we're doing is making it a little bit bigger and using it as an interim. So there there's some reusable factors with the interim lift station that don't entirely go away. Uh I'm not sure how how far we went with that analysis in the past, Mr. Walker. But I I I know that there's some, there there are some value in there in being able to reuse it. The really big problem, it gets a little complicated chemistry. If if you're if you're building a really large station and serving a very small area, this the sanitary sewer uh it 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 breaks down and creates hydrogen sulfide, which is a uh uh an acid and and it and it works on on your on your stations and your pumps and your equipment and everything like that. So when you when if you build things smaller, you 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 decrease the amount of detention time you have with your sewage in there. You have less of that. And so you you don't really want to be sub subjecting your big, big expensive station to that kind of deterioration. Because it'll, quite frankly, probably take twenty years or better for that entire area to develop. So in the in the meantime, you're just using a smaller you're using a garden tractor instead of the the big John Deere, for lack of a better term.
Okay, well, I will trust that you guys understand the finances then related to that. I did have one other question. And and it's going back to item two point two, when we were talking about development south of sixty second Avenue. And this lift station is to serve that square between Belmont Road and South Washington, south of six six or yeah, south of sixty second. We also had a developer that wanted to do a mirror on the west side of of Washington, south of sixty second. Do we have a an interim lift station in there or a lift station there that will cover that area? Or are we going to be talking about an interim lift station for that development in the near future as well?
Yes, if we cross Washington on the other side, we would also at some point need another lift station out there. Um we would explore some options. Are there, remember, we rehabbed that uh that lift station down there in Deacon's Gardens, and I there may be some a little bit of capacity in there that we could tap into uh on an interim basis, but but not for very long. The more proper answer to your question probably is that, yes, we would have to put in another interim station out there also.
Okay. Okay, got to move the sewage. There any other questions for Mr. Walker or or Mr. Grasser? The uh if I recall correctly, there was a motion in a second already. Other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries, Ms. Ma, dissent. Very good. Item two point six, uh agreement with city of East Grand Forks for city project eighty one ninety three. Inspection of Point Bridge. Mr. Walker.
So federal requirements uh dictate that uh bridges with having a having a span of uh twenty feet or greater are required to be uh inspected periodically. And uh for bridges that the the city of Grand Forks owns, that that inspection has been provided to us previously uh by the North Dakota DOT, uh including the the Point Bridge. Um recently, the North Dakota DOT is is indicated that that they want to get out of the bridge inspection business for counties and cities in the in the state of North Dakota. And uh they're also suggesting that uh if uh if if cities or entities share a bridge owner, share ownership of a bridge with another entity that they enter into an agreement to enter into an agreement to jointly inspect that that bridge. In the case of the Point Bridge, that's owned by the city of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. And East Grand Forks is required to inspect the the Point Bridge by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. So in the past, it has had dual inspections. With the DOT no longer wishing to inspect the bridges for us, it makes sense to enter into an agreement with East Grand Forks to jointly share in the cost of the inspection service and jointly share the results of that inspection and do that rather than duplicate services. So what you have before you is an agreement to do just that. The agreement has been prepared by the Grand Forks City Attorney and has been reviewed by the East Grand Forks City Attorney. This agreement will be going before the East Grand Forks Council Work Session tomorrow night and will be at their East Grand, at the East Grand Forks City Council Meeting a week from tonight. The agreement indicates that East Grand Forks would be responsible for the hiring of the bridge inspection. And they would, the inspector would need to meet national bridge inspection standards, which is a requirement of North Dakota DOT and Minnesota DOT. The findings of the bridge inspection would then be distributed to both cities and both DOTs with the costs equally shared between both cities. So we see this as a is a win-win for City of Grand Forks as well as the city of the East Grand Forks. And with that, we would recommend approval of the agreement with the city of East Grand Forks for bridge inspection services for the Point Bridge.
Any questions from the committee related to bridge inspections? Mr. Weigle?
I'm approval.
His approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marshall.
I have
Mr. Weber, did you have a question? Yes, sir.
When when did the state unilaterally decide that the inspections that they've been doing for many years? That they no longer have to do that?
That's been a recent development and if you if you recall, oh, it's been several months ago. We brought forth an agreement before council wherein we had a an agreement with the state of North Dakota that that we would have their consultant do bridge inspections for us for for bridges that are owned by the city of Grand Forks. The what the DOT has done is instead of inspecting all of these bridges throughout the state of North Dakota, they hired a or they requested proposals from engineering firms to do those inspections. So we're still going to be able to tag on to the North Dakota DOT's expertise regarding inspections of these, but they will be inspected not by DOT staff, but rather by DOT's consultant. And the the inspection would be overseen by by the North Dakota DOT. We would then be responsible to pay for the cost of the inspection services done by the by the consultant. The 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 advantage of of doing that also is is that we're able to use federal monies to pay for some of these bridge inspections.
Oh. How much? How much of the the new cost? The cost that had been borne by the state that's now being borne by the city, what percentage of that is is going to be covered by the feds?
You know, that's unclear, and I believe that the 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 previous inspection was also covered by the by the feds as well. The the billing that we received was just for the city's local share.
It just feels like to me like increasingly cities are are having to take on more and more responsibility. This is a bridge that's used by not just people in our city, but people all over. And we're we're having to take on the burden of the these costs. It 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 weighs into taxation questions. People get upset when local taxes don't drop as fast as they want or maybe even go up. But we're municipalities are increasingly having to take on responsibilities like this. Thanks. Thanks for that information.
Mr. Weber, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same signs. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Item 2.7, Warbid for Projects Number 8209, 8210, 8211, and 8212, District Numbers 349, 577, 578, and 750, Water, Storm Sewer, Stormwater Pond and Paving for South 19th Street and 44th Avenue South. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, committee members. This project was previously brought before the committee. If you recall, this installs utilities and paving in the Edgewood Secondary Subdivision Development. It was brought forward at the request of the developer, Miss Kegesi Properties. This general area is in 19th Street South and 44th Avenue South, that portion of the city. Previously, or and most recently, the committee took action to approve the plans and specifications and direct engineering to advertise for construction bids. That was back on April 20th. Since then, we have advertised for bid. We advertise these four projects as one with the intent to award one single contract. We received four bids and opened them on May 4th. The low bidder was submitted by Gladden. The little bid was submitted by Gladden Construction and it was 4.1% below the engineers' estimates. Total amount was roughly 1.65 million dollars. Just as a reminder, the costs for this project are all special assessed to the benefiting properties. The exception, though, is a 15% city cost share for the regional stormwater pond. That amounts totals approximately $55,000 and that is budget for to be to be paid out of the stormwater fund 5400. So with that, staff recommends award to the low bidder, Gladden Construction, in the amount of 1,648,648 and 20 cents. Penny, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Weber, question?
The the 15% city share, we we will receive far more benefit than that cost. The the bulk of this is being covered by the developer. It's a it's a great project. I'll move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, moved by Weber. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veen. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Lieberman? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.8, Other Discussion Items. Are there other discussion items for the group tonight? Any, Mr. Weigle?
Just briefly, President Sandy, just want to call attention that it is National Police Week this week. So just take an opportunity to keep all the officers that have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty here locally and nationally. So just keep them in your thoughts and prayers and just wanted to call a little attention to that.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Certainly a good, a good thing to do. Any other? Mr. Weber?
Just to bring things back to the beginning, the the loan that we approved tonight to the CVB coming out of Economic Development Funds 2163, that'll be paid back by CVB over the next five years. I think that's a fantastic investment. I'm glad we approved that. That's all I've got.
Very good. Ms. Dockler?
I had asked Mr. Phelan last week just to check in on citizen comments for our Zoom meetings because it's not ideal. COVID-19 is in an ideal situation and neither is citizen commenting right now. And so I was wondering if you could give us an update on what you found out or what you're working on.
Council President Sandy and Council Member Dockler, after last week's city council meeting, as you recall, we had a discussion regarding university area rental unit. And some of the discussion was when I I had with Council Member Dockers, how how do general citizen street, how do they, how can they engage as part of the discussion? And similar to tonight, under the CVB item, we allow in Julie Riggs, the CEO of of the of CVB to to engage as part of that conversation. Similar to last week, we allowed the we had the stormwater issue in and around that Ultra area. We allowed in the condo association as a representation to have some of the discussion. I think Council Member Dockler really summarized the citizen comments really well and even went further, I told her. And she came up with some solutions that she'd want to work on in this area. But there was a sense of how do how do regular citizens engage in part of the conversations? I did follow up with this, the school district, and I think they're having a meeting as we speak. They allow at the start of the meeting, citizen comment, and they they allow so many minutes and so much time in their agenda for people citizens to engage on whatever whatever may be their issue. We did discuss this at our our department head meeting. And and then he would have to be led in by a gatekeeper as part of the meeting, as part of the Zoom meeting. So in our case, it would have to be like a John Bernstrom would have to allow people in and out of the meeting. I discussed this with the mayor and he was not in favor of doing it at the front of the meeting, but if we want to do it at the end of the meeting would be a better place just like we did when we were meeting in person. Otherwise, you know, you know, it kind of sets the tone of the meeting at the start. And so if we're going to do it, if we could do it at the end of the meeting of any follow-up regarding citizen comment. So with that, that's what we that's what the school district's doing. We can do more. It just is more logistics of allowing people in and and out so that we can preserve and make sure that we can maintain control of our our Zoom meetings too. So there would be some gatekeeping and some choreography. And I think Council Member Dockler did a terrific job on behalf of her ward in in that in that neighborhood. But I think even Council Member Weber brought up to me, you know, is there a way forward that we could incorporate it into into our meeting agenda since we're going to perhaps be at the Zoom meeting into June if there was a way for it. So that's what I I I discussed with Councilman Dockler. I think if we do it, there's a way to do it. I think we would prefer to do it near the end of the meeting, just like we did when we met in person. And we also, I I had this other discussion I had put on the call agenda, Council President Sandy, just in case people had some things they wanted to bring up, at least there's an agenda and we can bring it up with discussion. So I'd open up for discussion. We're willing to to listen and wherever whatever you folks think best. And we'd probably incorporate this as part of next week's city council meeting if we were to do something. I think John Bernstrom may be on air, so I'm not sure if he has anything else to add other than what I've added.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I personally would really appreciate if we added it on to the end of the meetings. They're few and far between when it is utilized, but when it is utilized, I do think it's important that people have that access to their council, especially when we're so virtual right now. If somebody's going out of their way to try and engage in this process, we should be able to remove some of the barriers so that they can participate if they truly want to.
I certainly agree with Ms. Dockler that absolutely reasonable to allow people to have the opportunity to add discussions. Anyone else want to keep the public out? I didn't think so. I think it's a great opportunity. Is there any, anyone else have any items for discussion tonight? In the vein of Ms. Dockler's comments and thoughts last week, I'd like to say that everyone should be nice to one another. It takes no effort to be kind to your neighbors. So please, people, I know things, times are difficult right now with COVID and whatever else. Take care. Your your neighbors, your friends, people need a hug now and again. There's nothing wrong with extending your hand to people that need it. Anything else for the good of the order? Your motion to adjourn by Weber. Thanks. Second by Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Good night, everyone.